Good evening, everyone. Michelle, it's good to see you and you were able to get on.
Yes, good to see all of you as well. I don't know why on the City of Inglewood's website, you know, the meetings portal, if I clicked on the link, the Zoom link to this meeting, it didn't work.
I went back in and reconnected or relinked it. So hopefully it's working now. It worked for me.
Yeah, I just didn't want any of the public, I mean, I can go back and find your email, so it's not for me, but didn't want the public to miss the meeting as sure as they wanted to attend.
You should have a quorum. Carl will not be here.
We have six. Yeah, no, Colin.
Colin, excuse me, Carl's here, Colin. Sorry.
I'm like, I see Carl right there.
I do that all the time.
All right, well, being that, hey, I've called on people twice before, I hear you. Being at 7:01 and we have a quorum, I would like to call the June 8th, 2021 Inning and zoning commission meeting to order. And ask you to call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Here.
McDonaldson?
Here.
Colin Hagerty is absent. Judy Brown?
Here.
Thank you. Kate Fuller? Okay, Diane Lapowski?
Here.
Noel Atkins?
Here.
Carl Adams?
Here.
And Chair Austin?
All right, the next order of business is the approval of the May 18th, 2020 one minutes. Do I hear a motion in a second?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second up.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or amendments? Hearing none. Nancy, could you call for the vote?
I will. I also will state for the record that Kate Fuller just entered the meeting. McDonaldson?
Yes.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Obeying.
Diane?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Perfect. The next order of business is a public forum. I don't see anybody, but sometimes my screen's a little limited. Do we have anyone from the public on with us tonight?
We do not.
Okay. All right. Then moving on, it looks like we're to the meat of the meeting, which is the city center rezoning. And am I calling upon John? Am I calling upon you to do this?
Yes, at least I will get us started. So tonight we concluded in your packet our black line copies of the UDC text amendments for city center as well as the Inglewood Station TSA specific plan regulating document. And we presented these, both of these pieces to city council last night. We had very limited time, but we think it went pretty well. But we still probably have a lot of work cut out to do with them in the public hearing phase of the project in order to get them to feel comfortable with it. So Dan and I talked this morning and he just, we decided that why don't we, we kind of give you a preview of what we did present to council. Kind of help us just refresh our memories about why all this is happening and get a sense of what we conveyed to council about the project. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to have a little bit of a short PowerPoint that we're going to just go through. And then once we're completed with that, we'll start getting into the meat of the black lines and specific plan document. And so let me see if I can share the screen.
You did it, John. Congratulations. That's often the hardest part. So just echoing what we did last night, I'm going to provide a little bit of a warm up and some background color for John. So part of what we were dealing with last night is it was the first city council live meeting in a long, long time in the community room. And so we were all in little plastic bubbles. And it was a couple of the council people were remote, so it was kind of an odd setting. The IT folks were working really hard to figure out how to get everything working. It worked pretty well for the most part, but it was a little bit rough to get things going. So that just gives you a little of the flavor. And then that was on top of our very short period of time to talk about this big topic. But going, you know, what we did is we just tried to really go through with city council some of the things that we had gone through with you all over the past, you know, six or seven months and kind of there were some aha moments in terms of how we presented things. And I'll point some of these out to you. But on this slide number two, we just really tried to recap some of the recent events and trends contributing to the city center area decline in recent years, which really, you know, lead to the need for redevelopment. But at the bottom of this slide, I think the key is that the rezoning strategy has been designed as it's evolved to make city center zoning comparable to what other TOD stations do, both in the Denver area and nationally. And, you know, that was kind of a concept that really evolved through our various work sessions with you all. You know, at the end of the day, city center, you know, to attract the participants that we need to attract has to be comparable, has to be competitive with what these participants are seeing elsewhere. And then related to that, we have, you know, we put in place over the past two years two key implementation tactics that also relate strongly to the zoning, rezoning. And that's the preliminary development agreement with SKB, which is the city selected master development partner for the city property. And then the framework agreement with L and R partners. And that pertains to the former wine garden property. And you'll see the graphics of both of those shortly. John, if you would, next slide. So here's something you've seen before, which is really the redevelopment, redevelopment goals for city center in terms of really reversing and interrupting a downward trending dated low density retail focused, you know, development. We do want to add hotel, office, residential. And we've all, you know, come to see kind of the underdeveloped nature of the overall project. One of the things that's evolved has been the opportunity to support a revitalized central business district in tandem with the new downtown development authority, which is up and running and operating quite well. A lot of interest from that board. We obviously on the revenue side want to really increase sales and property taxes and generate other city revenues. We've, we've mentioned at times when everybody's surprised by it that the city receives no current revenues for all of its various real estate interests in city center. And at the end of the day, we really want to retain and attract Inglewood employers, residents, new retailers, restaurants, and everything that's necessary to make it a real vibrant people place. John? So I'll also mention here, as it ties back to our rezoning strategy, that, you know, in Denver, and this is true really across the country, but particularly in Denver, the overwhelming amount of new development is taking place at transit oriented developments like city center. So that's the good news. The bad news is we have an awful lot of competition right now. And they really set the standard for what we need to achieve rezoning wise at city center. So that's driving a lot of, you know, where we're headed. And then we spent a little time just trying to summarize for city council, you know, these two primary tactics, which again, the preliminary development agreement with SKB and then the framework agreement with L and R. But this is the graphic that we've used now dozens of times in our discussions with both you all and city council. It shows the city property in blue, which is the property that SKB is really focused on. And the L and R partners are former wine garden property in red. And so let me just circle back to a couple of my notes and, and mention that the redevelopment participants that we need to attract or keep with the rezoning include, include the following. It's our master development partner, SKB, because they still have, you know, an opportunity to not fulfill that role. It's the special servicer on the wine garden property, L and R, because they could also go in a different direction. It's the vertical developers of individual projects that both of them will be looking to attract and sell to. It's potential anchor tenants, it's hotel operators, and importantly, investors and lenders needed to make all these projects move forward. So from a rezoning perspective, all these participants are going to be looking at comparing TOD opportunities. And they're going to look at all the factors that we really focused on in prior discussions. And it's allowable heights, density, parking requirements, design requirements, and then the complexity and timing for special project, for specific project approvals. And so those are all the things that city center is going to get judged on going forward in terms of whether it's a competitive TOD project that can attract these participants. And, you know, one of, one of my notes is that if, if we pull back on the elements of the rezoning, we will end up with an uncompetitive TOD project that will see little, if any, new real redevelopment activity. So that kind of sets the stage for what we're trying to do here. And then just ended up, John, I guess we'll look at the next slide. I can't. And, and here was the one that really captured kind of the framework agreement, which is the agreement that kind of forces a coordination, if you will, between the city property in blue and the former L and R property in red here. And under this framework agreement with, which the city council asked us last October to pursue, there are three big conditions, which was to terminate the underlying ground lease in order to facilitate the transfer of the former wine garden property parcels. And those are labeled as BBC and D on this site plan. There's the rezoning of city center from PUD to MUB1. Then council's preliminary endorsement of a large multifamily project on the south half of parcel C, which is where Office Depot and Harbor Freight are located. And so these are the basis of that agreement, which will be going up before city council for approval in July, actually. So and then I'll just end up with kind of this reminder, and it relates to the rezoning. If we cannot collectively deliver the rezoning to both SKB and L and R, both of them have a contractual right to walk. And so our, you know, our key implementation tactics under that scenario would go away. And it shows really how important the rezoning is. So that really sets up the overall framework that John's going to talk about. I'll just, you know, use this as an opportunity. John did an outstanding job last night, I think, representing not only staff, but the discussions that have been held with you all. And I think really that some of the thoughtful, really thoughtful conversations that have evolved in, you know, in the context of that process. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
All right. So at this point, we transitioned from Dan to myself. And with this first slide, I reiterated that we basically are recommended rezoning strategy is a three-part strategy. The first part being text amendments to certain aspects of the MUB1 zone district, including visitor accommodation uses, i.e. hotel, and also the ground floor visiting and revising the ground floor commercial requirement. The second strategy is the development of the, what would become the basis for the Inglewood Transit Station area specific plan regulating document, including regulate development intensity regulations for density and parking for residential, commercial parking, building height, and architectural standards and guidelines. And the third part of the strategy is a formal, the formal base district rezoning of city center from PUD to MUB1 and adoption of the Inglewood TSA overlay district. And I also explained to them that this, these three strategies would be packaged in two cases. The first case will include the first two strategies, the text amendments and the TSA specific plan regulating documents. And that will have its own public hearing and its own first and second readings. And then immediately following that, on the same nights, we have the second case deals with the actual formal base district rezoning and the adoption of the overlay district. And that will have its own public hearing and first and second reading votes as well. And then I went on to explain a little bit more about, in details about some of these, these strategies. In terms of land uses, we told that we, I iterated that SKB is interested in the possibility of a hotel, but MUB1 zoning does not permit hotels and allowed use since that our recommendation was to add all types of visitor accommodation to the MUB1 as allowed use. And then for the land uses for the commercial ground floor requirement, I explained about how that we currently in the entire MUB1 zone district, we have a requirement that 51% or more of the ground floor must be used for commercial purposes and that this is a significant barrier to residential only development. And that generally works well for the historic Broadway frontage where we have small parcels and that there's a lot of demand for commercial on a very visible corridor. But that demand tends to drop off quite significantly once you get off that Broadway corridor. And we also have these very large parcels to the west where you're looking at 100,000 square foot floor plate easily. And you're trying to require that over 50% of that 50,000 square feet has to be commercial. And that gets to be quite a significant ask. And I think that, that example, they got that quite quickly. And so our recommendation, of course, was to limit the commercial ground floor requirement to just the historic downtown Broadway Main Street area. And then I went into the actual TSA specific plan document, oops, went too far. And so we talked about the actual development intensity regulations we've developed and how that we developed a system that is based on a two-tier strategy based on distance from the station platform. And I pointed out the quarter mile and half mile circles on this map. And then related that the yellow, we considered that to be within the quarter mile distance from the station. And that the pink was the properties that we consider to be within the half mile area. And then I showed them that this was, this is really the guts of the work that you guys worked on to come up with. Because of time, I really didn't go through all of it. But I did, I did, I did touch on the residential density. And I tried to relate that to certain projects we have that they are familiar with. You know, I basically talked about our typical densities that we have today are typically 50 to 70 units per acre. And the 50 units per acre is akin to the Art Walk apartments. And with a 70 units per acre being very akin to the Bell Cherry Hills project. And that we decided that that should be kind of the minimum floor that we're looking for here at city center. And I talked about the, our maximum density that we chose 125 units per acre, which is very akin to the live apartments in downtown Inglewood and was what was recommended in our station, original stationary master plan. And then I also touched on the parking, the residential parking especially. I reiterated that we were looking to try to be very comparable with Denver and Aurora in terms of our residential parking rates. And then I also talked briefly about the commercial parking. And I reiterated to council that with commercial parking, that the plans or equation had a little bit different strategy approach to that. And was rather than looking at hard numbers to plug in, opted for a more of a guideline for negotiation, authorizing staff to look at a possible up to a 25% reduction in all of these commercial uses for parking within the half mile zone and within the quarter mile zone up to a 50% reduction. And then I just decide, then we, then with the final slide, we wrapped up and we gave them the anticipated rezoning schedule so that they know what to expect and when to expect it. And that was it. And I think it went pretty well. Yeah, it was a little rough for Dan at the beginning, but once the PowerPoint was worked out, I think it went really smoothly. once the PowerPoint was worked out, I think it went really smoothly. All right. So I think now, let me, let me ask just to see if there's any comments or questions about the council presentation.
Could you briefly flip back to the dates so that I could jot them down?
Okay.
Thank you.
There, you see him?
Yes, John, we can see them. Thank you.
All right. Again, I thought, I think I'd like to ask if there's any questions or comments about the council presentation. Looks like Kate might have a question.
Thanks, John. I was just curious if do we that was a great presentation for for the council. And I was just curious if there is other examples where we have differences in parking requirements based on whether something's market rate or income restricted. And and sorry if this isn't the right time to ask this. I just came up since it was in that presentation. Like, how does that? Is there a deed restriction? Like, if that were to be approved by staff? Or how does that kind of go from the land use decision to the site actually being built as either income restricted or market rate?
Wow. That's a good question. I'm not quite sure. You know, I'm thinking we would follow the process is that we followed with the Broadway Comal Offs. That's the major workforce housing that we have here in Inglewood. I'm guessing that, you know, if they qualify and they have typically those projects, they get tax credits from, I believe, the state and feds. And so if they have those tax credits in hand and they're approved, you know, I think then, you know, they're credible and they can put forth a plan that basically says, hey, we're doing an income restricted property. I think that probably that's good enough to qualify that for that income restricted parking ratio. And to your the previous question, yes, there is, there is a significant difference that we are allowing. I believe it's about a 25% reduction in each zone district for, you know, the within the half mile and the quarter mile going down from the requirement you have in the market rate. And I think there's even some little wiggle room to negotiate even farther down within that quarter mile radius.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan, is there anything you would like to add to that?
No, I think you covered that well. Thanks.
I think Carl has a question.
Now, I was looking at the Alta developer, the Alameda Station. Their parking on there is 1.5. And it seems like pretty much all of Alta developing apartments are 1.5. So will that restrict them from developing in Inglewood with the requirements that are in the the new zoning numbers?
No, because basically what we've established is parking minimums. But we have not actually established any parking maximums. So a developer could decide that I feel I need a little more parking based on my past experience leasing apartments. I believe the demand will be higher than that. And so they can opt for a higher parking ratio if they so desire.
The the I'm a little confused on the the 3,400 block, the 33, 34, 3,500 block, the exempt, is that an exemption for them for the retail on the ground floor? So the the M1B would go, I thought it only went to a coma, not to Broadway.
So yes, the TSA zoning, so specific zone or specific plan that we are overlay that we are working on here does only go to coma. So this, that, that amendment is actually to the current MUB one zone standards. And what we are looking at is we feel that the commercial requirement on Broadway is workable because of this, there's small lots and also because there's high demand for commercial there. And also just because of the historic nature of the district, we would, we want to, we want to preserve what that is. And we and we don't want it to majorly change. And we and we want it to be a very small, nice little historical downtown Main Street district. And so we would not really want to see major housing buildings come in and and tear down commercial businesses and without putting in new commercial areas. So we want to preserve that rule there on Broadway. However, we've looked in terms of the areas west of the coma, we need, we really feel we need to get away from that. It doesn't, it doesn't make as much sense with the large parcels that we're looking at. And we just, we don't feel we could fill that up with all with 51% commercial and retail.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking it was, but I was a little confused. Maybe there's the wording or I don't know.
You know, a council asked questions about that, too. So, yeah, it's not surprising.
I don't see any other hands. So I got one more question here. The some of the maps show that I'm a little confused on the Inglewood Parkway. The commercial or the 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 buildings along the Inglewood Parkway there. So you have a commercial on the bottom and then the apartments on the top. Some of those maps show that those are going to be torn out. I can't imagine why you do want to do that, but.
I'm not, can you be more specific about what it showed, what you're relate referring to that's going to be torn out?
The well, specifically on the south side of Inglewood Parkway where the between, what is it IHOP and to across the street from Nixon's coffee shop? That whole stretch in there.
I think that's still kind of up in the air. SKB has kind of has kind of thought about that as an alternative where they might knock that down and build a mixed use type development in a more intensive density fashion that would replace the commercial on the first floor, but then go up with multi-story residential. That's not set in stone, however.
Carl, are you referring to the Inglewood Parkway in Inca Street or Galapago or Alati? Because Nixon's is on Inca Street, right?
Yeah, between, well, basically from the the Fountain Park down to down to the parking lot for Walmart.
Which is Alati. Okay.
Yes. With the Office Depot and Harbor Freight block.
Yeah, those are probably coming down. I I hate to see Harbor Freight leave, but they they gotta be doing some pretty business there. I would think 3 and 1/2% of what they're do is going to Inglewood. Seems like that's a pretty good amount of money.
Good business.
Yeah, whereas the for apartment buildings, Inglewood only gets like 13% of what their property taxes are. Like, if there are, I think it was the Alta, the Alta apartments down in Broadway, they pay about 300,000 for property taxes, but Inglewood only gets about 38,000 out of them.
That's that's correct. The schools get the lion's share of property taxes.
Yeah. The schools get a lot of it. But that doesn't help anywhere else.
And I have a question. I don't see any other hands up either. And I don't see anywhere that there's any specifics for any sort of entertainment uses. Would that be handled on a case by case basis? I'm thinking, you know, movie theater, that sort of thing.
It definitely doesn't preclude those uses. We would consider those uses as retail or commercial uses. But of course, it we have experience where sometimes you can't, you don't necessarily want to promise things either, because sometimes we there was, as you probably know, there was efforts to bring a movie theater to the city center redevelopment. And unfortunately, that didn't work out. So we're, you know, we're kind of cautiously optimistic about that. But, you know, I don't have a crystal ball as well.
Right. No. Well, and of course, the movie business is changing and who knows how that's going to end up. But there's other entertainment things where there's, you know, inside miniature golf and all sorts of activities inside. And I was just curious if there was anything that was already considered in terms of that. So, okay. Any other questions?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay, then I'm going to bring up the agenda here. And we'll go through some of this maybe here. Having some problems by mouse here. All right, I share the screen again. All right, I've I've on my screen, I have page 36 of 129. Is that what you see?
John, could you make it a little bit larger?
Okay.
I was gonna say, yes, we see it very tiny.
Okay. See. How's that look?
Better. Thank you.
All right. So I'll just go, I'm going to hit the highlights of the UDC Black Line attachment. So for visitor accommodations here on page 36, we have added to the table of loud uses for visitor accommodations, bed and breakfast, hotel, hotel extended stay. And we have added in the MUB one column, P for permitted. That's pretty simple. Then I'll take you to page 67. Maybe.
We hear you clicking or scrolling.
Okay. So this is where we take care of the commercial ground floor requirements. So here in number four, it says residential use in MUB one. And then we add in parentheses, 3,300, 3,400, and 3,500 block frontages of South Broadway only. And then that basically ends the MUB one commercial requirements in the zone district, except for those three block frontages of South Broadway. So that was a pretty simple fix. I'm not so the and then, of course, the bulk of the the bulk of the black line edits and additions they are based on, number one, the removal of all language that pertains to the transit stationary base zone district. Because we opted to remove that existing base zone district that had never been used in favor of establishing the transit stationary specific plan overlay district. And so there's a lot of of text in there that is in there and with a lot of stuff crossed out, all this TSA base zone district references. And I'm not going to go through all of that. But instead, I'm going to take you now to the actual establishment of the TSA specific plan overlay, section 16 to 20. All right. This the specific plan process requirements and review. Specific plans are intended to serve as comprehensive, self-contained, and generally self-executing regulatory documents for the governance, control, and implementation of land uses and development within the specific plan district. A specific plan establishes the distribution of generalized land uses, residential densities, and negotiable ranges for other development parameters such as building height and parking ratios based on deliberations and final recommendations of the planning and zoning provision with final approval authority vested in the city council. Specific specific plans are considered to be living documents that can be largely amended continuously in administrative fashion as detailed physical planning elements emerge through the development, planning, and design process. Specific plans are designed to provide flexibility and predictability for city development departments and private development entities engaged in redevelopment activities. The specific plan site plan approval process is designed to facilitate project approval in an expeditious manner, allowing private development entities to respond quickly to market conditions and reduce the amount of time to complete development projects. So that in a nutshell is the aim of our specific plan process in our specific plan regulating document. We're looking to create more predictability, yet also more flexibility and and being able to approve projects in a more expeditious manner that allows people to respond quickly to market conditions. And then we go on and we have specific plan and specific plan site development plan requirement. I'm not going to read that for you. I hopefully you've read it before. Applicability of municipal codes to specific plan districts. D, we have part D, specific plan initiation. They shall, a specific plan or major amendments to a specific plan shall be initiated by city council. And then we have letter E, specific plan content. And I'm not going to go through all of that, but you'll see what that is within the actual specific plan document that we will go through a little bit.
John, if I could interrupt, Judy has a question.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I just real quick, just I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So this specific plan that process that you presented, this is a basis from which the intention is then to have something where you could continue to create multiple overlays. So the transit So the transit station area would be a, I know, a specific, specific plan, and there might be other specific plans. Is that the way this is being organized? Because this doesn't say transit station area specific plan, so it's, it's a base specific plan that will allow us to create different overlays as necessary? Is that how I'm understanding this?
So Wade and I talked about that and we decided that there may be in the future a use for another specific plan overlay. Primarily, we were thinking about the Oxford Station area. So, so yes, that's true, that this could be used somewhere else in the future. However, the, the, the other part of your question where there would be a specific, where it would progressively get smaller with more smaller specific plans within a specific plan, no, that is not the intent.
No, that, that wasn't my question. So you have this base plan and then we're going to talk about the one that's specific for this redevelopment area, right?
Right.
So now that transit station area is a specific plan, right?
Yes.
So it specifies something that's called a transit station area specific plan. What I'm just trying to understand, so what we're going over here is the basis for any specific plan, correct?
I think you're right there. This is open in the fact that it is, it is the, the basis for establishing a specific plan that could be beyond the one that we're currently talking about.
So if we did went to Oxford Station and we, we might come up with a different specific plan, but it would not change any of the stuff that we're going over here. There would be specific items that could be changed in a, in a, but this isn't it. This stuff isn't going to change. Okay, let me reword that. If, if you were going to create a specific plan for Oxford, does this wording change? Do we have to go through all of this again? Or are we gonna have unique items within that that can be specified for different areas?
Yes, that's the beauty of this is that once this is in our code, this part, if we want to establish a new Oxford Station specific plan, this does not change. This just supports it and that the, all of the details of it would be contained in a specific plan document similar to the one that we will see shortly after these black lines. It has, with its own rules, separate from this.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, she does. Sorry, I just saw that. Thank you.
I was just wondering, in the specific plan, is there a minimum size or a minimum area that would be eligible for a specific plan? Like a P U D has to be so many acres of, I'm not gonna get it right, whether it's contiguous or contiguous or whatnot. So yeah, is there a minimum size? And then also, can you do a P U D within a special, a specific plan?
I do not believe that we do, we establish a minimum size, which is, it's an interesting question. I guess, yeah, it didn't seem to me that because it was, so we've, we've kind of made it so that you, that private developers can't propose specific plans. We opted for that only a city council could initiate it. And so based on that, we didn't think that city council would create a postage stamp specific plan. So I, we never really addressed that. And in terms of doing a P U D, no, the, the specific plan is going to govern the development regulations for an area. And there's not going to be a chance to come in and rezone it as any portion of it as a P U D. You would have, if you, if you wanted to see, if some, if landlords wanted to see something different, they'd have to come to city council and petition them to make changes to this document or to the specific plan document.
So John, that brings up another question to me. So there wouldn't be variances is what you're saying, basically, unless the council initiated something.
No, that's not entirely true. We also did allow for variances within a certain parameters. So there is a variance process that they could go through as well.
Okay, thanks.
So then we have letter G, specific plan approval process, specific plan and major specific plan amendments may be approved by either an ordinance or a resolution of the city council. And the reason why that is, there's a, this option of ordinance or resolution is simply because this is codified in California law like this. And I believe they were just wanting to be kind of more flexible in terms of how you would adopt it. And I thought about this and decided, well, if it's good enough for the goose, it's good enough for the gander. And I decided to go ahead with the, both, you could be approved either by ordinance or resolution. However, we will be approving ours by ordinance. Going and then continuing on minor specific plan amendments may be approved administratively at the discretion of the city manager or designate. The city manager or designate may also like to bring minor specific plan amendments to the planning and zoning commission and city council by way of standard public hearing requirement. So for minor amendments is at the discretion of the city manager or designate. For major amendments, these will require approval by city council. And those include major relocation of buildings, lot lines, right of ways and easements, changes to establish land uses or building types, increase in building height in areas where negotiation, negotiators, negotiation is not allowed, increases in maximum allowed residential density by more than ten percent, introducing new allowed land uses that are not allowed by the base zone district and reduction in established residential and commercial parking range negotiation parameters. So all of those would trigger major amendments, which would require approval through the usual, what typical processes. But any other types of amendments would be considered minor amendments and could be administratively processed by the city manager or designate. And then we have criteria for approval for specific plan amendments. The city council shall find all of the following, the proposed plan or plan amendment is in conformance of the city's comprehensive plan and all city policy standards and sound planning principles and practices. The pro, the proposed plan advances and implements the objectives and policies, policies set forth in section sixteen three two and the properties associated neighborhood area assessment as set forth in the city's comprehensive plan. Three, there is either existing capacity and see streets, drainage and utility systems to accommodate the proposed plan or plan amendment. Arrangements have been made to provide such capacity and manner timeframe acceptable to city council. And the proposed plan or amendment is in compliance with all applicable provisions of this code. And then we have specific plan, site development, plan initiation. And this, this, this portion of the amendments follows very closely what they would have to do for a plan unit development in terms of a site plan, all the different things they'd have to bring to the table to be reviewed. And that's a pretty long list and I'm not gonna go through that. And then the specific plan, site development plan criteria for approval. One, consistency with adopted plans and standards. Consistency with spirit intended, it's cop plan, compliance, consistency with applicable specific plan standards. Compliance with all other applicable standards, guidelines, policies and plans adopted by council. Impact on existing city infrastructure and public improvements, internal efficiency of design and control of external effects. And then there's a, a part L is a specific plan, site development, plan approval process.
John, before you move forward, Kate has a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, this, it may be I'm too soon to ask this. And I'm trying to also just wrap my head around this, this process and having these specific plans and having them be driven by, by city council. So if you can help me think about this in terms of like, sorry, city council is an elected body that can change every couple of years, every two years. What about this gives a developer, like if you change something to a P U D, I feel as though you'd have pretty, you know, you feel as though that that's pretty solid for so many years. You have that, that zoning change. With this and the ability for city council to kind of come forward and say, we want to change something, what does the developer have or the person that is coming in? What sort of, how are they able to be assured that something major isn't going to be changed at the whim of city council within a short period of time when they're in a twenty year development cycle? Does that make sense? Or is, is this, is this just very similar to any other process, but it just seems different to me because of it, the way it's being presented right now?
Well, it is, this is very different than Inglewood and most communities experience. This is probably not, this is not something that's common here yet in Colorado. It really is something that has, was developed in California. It's used very extensively there. But as I will reiter, talk to you about later, this, basically the inspiration for this came from Westminster. And Westminster opted for this kind of a specific plan to regulate their redevelopment of the Westminster Mall site. And that site is now becoming, they're developing that into their new downtown for that city. And we felt that that this would be better for us, that we, we saw a lot of benefits to us as well as to them by following this type of a process. That's true that cities of council could, that's true. The city council could radically change and they might want to go off on a, and want to tinker with this. That's, that's totally true. But, so there is no guarantee, I guess, in that sense.
I, I think it, it's very innovative and I appreciate the, the flexibility and the sense to be able to really think about one specific area that just, I guess, if I was a developer or something like that, I just would want to know I have some long-term assurances, but maybe that just isn't possible.
Yeah, well, well, one of the things, so what's going on at Westminster right now is a lot of these developments are coming out of the ground. And the, the beauty of what they're doing is that, so they had, and I, I think I'll just start talking about this a little bit more, although I was planning to talk about later in the presentation. So they had struggled for a number of years trying to redevelop that mall site. And originally, they wanted to do it like most people do, is to try to get a master developer, one large developer to redevelop the whole thing. But they could never find a developer that they could see eye to eye with. And I think it had a lot to do with the fact that there is a future light rail line or it might be a, actually, it's probably a commuter rail line that's supposed to go all the way up to Boulder that passes on the southern boundary of that area and it won't be built for many, many years. But, but because they, they see that as something, they kind of think that this area as a TOD site, even though it's, it was going to be a long time before it ever is. And probably a master developer just didn't see it that way. And so they, they never really could see eye to eye. And so I think that's why they, they stopped trying to do it that way. And then they decide we're going to become the master developer and we're going to create a, a vision for this area. And then we're going to sell off these developer parcels to smaller companies that, and basically the, the attraction, I think, is that, that you can, you have, you'll open it up to a lot more developers that way to do smaller pieces. And the beauty is that these, because this plan is set up, as long as, as soon, as long as they comply with it, they can get approval immediately through an administrative process. And there's no six month political process to it. And so I think that's, that's, that to me seemed like that's, you know, based on my conversations with Brad Power and what he wanted to see here, this seemed to just match up really well with what, what we thought we would really need in the context of this. And we're a little bit different in the fact that we're dealing with a, an infill site that was developed. They, their site is, is a green field now because they demolished most of that mall site. But they are kind of going at it in a different way in terms of these smaller sites that where they can kind of plug in, play different projects and they're coming out of the ground really fast.
I don't see any other hands, John.
Okay. Part M, modification amendment of specific plan, site developed plans. There's a process for that and criteria. And finally, a little note about subdivision. And with that, yeah, is there any more questions about the establishment of the TSA overlay regulations and requirements? Any more questions on that? Dan?
Yeah, I want to go back, John, to Kate's point because I think it's a really good one. It may have gotten lost in there a little bit, but there is, there is this strategic concept, goal, objective of all of this is to give developers more certainty as relates to the process and more certainty about the time and their ability to deal with staff and negotiate with staff. And keep, you know, somebody's gonna hate hearing this, but keep city council out of the process once the whole rezoning scheme is established with their approval. And, you know, I, I think that gets a little bit mixed up, maybe with the site plan or the, the specific plan aspects of it. But as far as real world development goes, the goal is to give developers a higher degree of certainty and control over the project and the timing. And that was something that, you know, I think both parties that were dealing with S K B and L N R, they need that, they need that to be successful on behalf of the city.
All right, so I guess now let's move on to the national Inglewood Transit Station area specific.
I got a comment on the, the uncertainty of all this. Like the, we're, we're just coming out of a pandemic. So who knows what's gonna happen with the, the light rail. They predicted it will take like five years to get back to sixty percent of the travel on it. And then we have four council members being elected in, in a few months. So we, we got a lot of uncertainties there and that's, I don't know how developers look at the, if, if the plan is approved before November, then I, I guess that eliminates the council issue there. I guess that eliminates the council issue there. The the light rail is. Who knows when it's going to come back? And a lot of this is kind of developed around the light rail being there. It's kind of kind of iffy for me, anyway.
That's a fair point. So let's get, let's get into the Inwood Transit Station area specific plan document itself. First page here, we have city council listed and playing zoning and and C staff. We have an introduction about what's going on here, Sinrow City Mall. Kind of a history of city center and why we need, we were looking for some reinvention here in twenty twenty one. Purpose and scope, plan administration, project location and context. And here we have the overlay district boundary. And then we come in with a specific plan vision, which is based, we link this plan to our. Inwood Forward twenty sixteen conference of plan. And we we reiterate the following strategies that are laid out for the Inwood Station City Center Neighborhood Assessment that apply. Which includes in the plan, in the commerce plan, develop a financing district such as a downtown development authority. Combination of TIF capability and middle level without blight, where I mean domain is ideal. And then also, oh, I guess I was the off Broadway corridor, then Inwood Station C Center area. Strengthen the retail streets, city center, improving visual access from both Hampton and Inwood Station. Create a master plan for Inwood City Center and Downtown, looks reconfigure vehicle access to transit and parking to increase users exposure to retail. Enhance the streetscape, attract a retail anchor with appropriate incentives. If city functions offices are relocated, strive to place them in a more central position. And then we also include language that comes from our downtown development authority, the downtown matters plan of development. That supports the station area specific plan. And I don't think I'll walk through all that. Chapter two is the regulating plan. And this is where we establish a lot of the bulk of what you worked on that goes into regulating development intensity. And land uses. And this is the figure two, one is the land use and framework plan. And we have, as you, as you know, we have wanted to eliminate the. Commercial ground for requirement percentage, but that does not mean that we want that to go away entirely. So in our this plan, we have areas, block faces where we are requiring activated first floor frontages. But there's not a percentage per se, but they there will be required to activate those. And those are outlined in black, thick black lines. We also have some areas that are outlined in thick white lines where. That first floor activation would would be encouraged, but is not required. And our land uses, we're keeping fairly abroad in their determination. We know some parcels, including though the the north parcel where the park and ride is that. That likely will be some kind of multi unit residential as well as the south half of the block of. See a block C, which is the L N R property. And we also have some idea that we've heard going around that. This Inwood marketplace is looking to do some residential development as well. And then we follow that up with section two point three, the development intensity standards and guidelines. We lay out our quarter mile and half mile transit station area zones. And then we have the table two, one, the development intensity regulations that was I showed you previously in the councils. Presentation, once again, this, this is all your hard work to come up with these. And this is kind of the guts of the TSA plan. Then we have some talk about lot standards. We have a minimum lot fridge of twenty five feet and a minimum lot depth of a hundred feet. We establish setbacks that are very comparable to our. M E B one or medical zone districts. We've given a little bit more cushion, I think in the. In the M U B one is zero and nor more than ten. And based our experience in the medical district with redevelopment. We've have favored instead five and no more than fifteen for the. Areas adjacent to streets. And taking from the medical zone district regulations, we also have a minimum lineal street frontage requirement. Building frontages are required to cover a minimum distance of seventy five percent of length of the front lot line. Measured adjacent to and parallel with the front lot line, building frontages are required to cover. A minimum distance of twenty five percent of the length of the side lot line.
John, is the side side adjacent down to zero feet? Is that a change from what's current?
Side adjacent side that allow, that's like similar to, so on on Broadway downtown. All those buildings are all abutted to each other. And so they have a zero. Foot side to side setback and and we. We are not precluding that to happen here as well. If that is indeed something that's desired by developer. If they want to, if they decided to lot things that way and want to build that way, that that's allowed.
Okay, thanks.
Chapter three is circulation design. And this part of our plan is something we need to still work on, actually, because there's a lot of things here that we haven't figured out yet. And that's why we wanted to be this to be a kind of a living document. Because we feel that we still have to do a lot of work here on some of this stuff. As I, as I might have mentioned to you before, we have gotten a green light to make an application to Dr. Cog. To look at a lot of this type of circulation things. And hopefully that some of the things that we come up with in our next round of funding from Dr. Cog. We can plug and play into this portion of the plan. And so we 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 look at, we're going to need to look at transit access. Can the connecting bus stop bays, we think that they're probably going to be located where they are now. But there may be a different way that the buses circulate through the development. That may be more conducive to activating the entire development. Maybe through the creation some new streets and some new connections where they don't exist today. And so we'll be looking, we'll be trying to look at that. We also have a section on the shuttle bus. The redevelopment city center and establishment of the downtown development authority will allow improvements to be made to the existing shuttle bus system. Improvements are envisioned to be made in terms of reduced headway waiting times. Expansion of service hours include nights and weekends and vehicle and technology upgrades. In terms of the station platform, and this comes directly from citizenry during the stationary master plan. That citizens advocate for. Improvements to the station platform that would include wind shelters that would protect waiting transit riders. From fierce winds and blowing rain and snow. And I'm sure that they were speaking there from their experience when when you're up there up high. During inclement weather, it can be pretty miserable because there's nothing to block the wind up there. In terms of park and ride facilities, it's the city's intention to work with R T D to reduce the amount of park and ride space provided. More efficiently allocate the remaining park and ride space throughout the area. Looking at shared parking strategies, converting in some cases free parking to pay parking. And converting service parking to structured parking all in order to intensify the development level of the city center site. And then we also talked about connecting bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that we need to look at. Moving forward with eventual construction, the Inwood Rail Trail. And including bicycle pedestrian bridges over Hampton Avenue, Darbith Avenue, as well as a potential bicycle pedestrian bridge. Or Santa Fe Drive. The city should also advocate for a Santa Fe, South Santa Fe Drive flyover at Floyd Avenue to allow. Multi modal access to the South Platte River area at ground level through future corridor planning processes. And so for those of you who are aware. We are at the very beginning stages of looking at. South Santa Fe Drive, they recently have completed a planning and environmental linkages. Study for that corridor. And they will be eventually moving into a more detailed alternatives. And something that we might be able to advocate for is is a way to bridge over. Floyd Avenue so that we could build a new connection over to the river. And and maybe encourage redevelopment over there according to our stationary master plan. That's a long ways in the future, however. But that's something we put in here as a placeholder. And then in terms of the bicycle pedestrian network. Inwood Park Parkway will continue to serve as the primary retail spine, enhance ped route from Broadway Main Street to Inwood Station. Major improvements are needed beginning at the Walmart property and continuing east to Broadway. Bicycle routes identified in the walking wheel master plan, including would Parkway and Floyd Avenue and a Latty Street as the primary north south route. And these routes will include enhanced forms of dedicated bicycle lanes. And then also looking at the Little Dry Creek Trail connection and looking to try to make a little bit more coherent. Wayfinding for that connection to the Mary Carter Greenway through the development. And then there's just a few statements about street networks, new streets are envisioned to better connect the existing grid network in close proximity to the station. The Transit Station Air Plan divisions breaking the most southwestern block includes the existing city center into small, four smaller blocks. The development of new north south streets and a new east west street. And to the east, the Transit Station Air Plan, it visions road diet redesigns of portions of Floyd Avenue, west of Latty Street. And Cherokee Street, Inwood Parkway. Inwood Parkway will be straightened when the existing Inwood Marketplace site is redeveloped.
John, the elephant in the room here is the city of Inglewood space. Are there any conversations about the city of Inglewood moving their library and offices and things like that? Because if. If, you know, this is going to involve tearing down that building or potentially turning down that building.
Dan, you want to address that?
Yeah, I would say, Michelle, that's just really an ongoing planning. You know, exercise for S K B. In terms of evaluating the alternatives for the city offices. And whether they stay together or get split up. They have a number of different ideas, but nothing has really been finalized yet. I think all the possibilities fit into the overall rezoning scheme in one way or the other. And of course, you know, there's going to be somewhere along the way, there will be some public discussion about. The Civic Center Building, you know, there, there's someone out there with a petition who's. Very adamant against the potential demolition of the Civic Center Building, so. I I think there's just generally a consensus that this site is very inefficiently used. Because of the way that the building and the dated parking structure fits on this site. And the city is in in effect giving up a tremendous amount of opportunity. Cost because of. That would be attributed to continued occupancy of this building as is. So that's all I could tell you.
Judy has a question.
When you say this is a living document, I understand that there, this allows you to do administrative changes. All of the things, if I understand correctly, all of the things that you talked about in chapter three. None of them fall under the major amendments. So that I that unless I miss something. So what is your administrative process so that we can understand? Because, you know, I mean, you guys are taking on a a potential for a lot of. Public. Concern, I guess, I feel like you are. If things start changing, nobody here likes change. And that they didn't get an opportunity to say something. So I mean, I just explain to me. How that portion is specifically three. How that, what is going to be the internal process? That you all will use because it's just sort of like it unless I miss something in my reading. There's just some guy who's going to be, because the city manager is not doing this, let's be real. And so somebody's going to be assigned to to do this, to make these changes. And so how is the public notified of these changes and? I don't know. Tell me what the process is.
Well, that's a good question. I think and you are right, that's true that. That this, all of this here in this chapter three is intended to be administrative. However. That does not preclude that there won't be any public process. In terms of the next round of Dr. Cog funding that we are pursuing. We will definitely be having public being involved in that that planning process. Now, that's true. It doesn't say that you have to, but but we we believe that it would not be in our interest to. Cut out the public in those processes.
So you have not established the process that you all are going to use to go through these amendments internally yet? It's not just one person, right? There's a process.
Yes, I believe that because this is a planning document, I think P and Z will be involved. And I also believe that the public will also be involved in some way.
Right, that's not my question. Do you guys have a process?
It is totally administrative. There is no public hearings.
No, no, no. Inside, what is your process inside the city, ignoring P and Z in the public? What is your guys' process for amendments? Some guy in an office says, yeah, this is okay.
It doesn't quite work that way.
Tell me how it works. That's what I'm asking.
So we're going to be investigating a lot of these transportation related issues. We we will be getting a grant from Dr. Cog, hopefully to do that. We will be hiring consultant to help us with that and we will, through their scope of work. They will be required to have a public process that includes the public heavily in. Engaging alternatives for these divert transportation options. And hopefully coming to a desired transportation option. And the Plan Zoning Commission will also be involved in meetings with the consultants as well. But there will be, but but at the end of the day, yes, this will be, once there is a plan that. We have consensus on, we will automatically plug it in here.
Okay, so I guess this goes more back to. Not this overlay that we're talking about here, but the specific plan process. Where you say, okay, anything that's not major is administrative. And I I don't know, maybe I'm not communicating clearly. I don't understand how administrative changes work in the city. That's my question.
I felt I just explained it to you.
Well, you explained what you would do in this specific case. That's not my question. I'm saying. I'm saying for any other specific plan overlay plan like this, if you decided to do Oxford, that's a whole new plan. And there's going to be administrative changes to that potentially. I'm wondering what the underlying process is internally to handle administrative plans. Because it's always going to be different, right? It's always going to be a different change. In Oxford, it could have nothing to do with bicycles, it might have to do with, I don't know, a big turnaround for cars who are dropping people off. I, I don't think I'm making myself clear enough for what I'm asking. And so I guess I won't beat the dead horse, but I'm just trying to understand how you make administrative plans internally. Do you have a specific process? Or is it just going to be unique to every single one of these overlays?
That's a good question. And because I'm not necessarily involved in, in those types of decisions, I suppose those, that's going to be done by the planning manager or the director. It's hard for me to talk about it because I'm not really experienced in how those processes operate.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Carl? You're muted.
Well, I got that. On the hearing that we're going to have for planning and zoning next meeting, can you explain what the, the mailings are going to be on that? Where the notice notifications are going to be posted on that? And who's going to be notified and when?
I, I believe that the letters have already gone out, is that correct, Nancy?
Yes, they went out last Friday.
Okay, so we, we are following the exact same mailing list as we did for the neighborhood community meeting. So every address or property that is within a thousand square, a thousand feet distant of the boundaries of the TSA area is being notified.
The poster boards or whatever you want to call them, the big red signs, where will those be located?
So we asked our attorney about that. And we believe that there is a section of our code that says that in this case, that it does not, in terms of multiple properties like this over a large area, that that is not required. And the attorney agreed with that. And so we will not be posting signs throughout the area.
All right, thank you.
It, it seems, it seems to me that that this proposal affects way more than just people a thousand square feet away or a thousand feet away from, from this area. Was there any consideration to doing a much wider mailing to the city citizens?
You know, that's a good question. And maybe we, we probably should actually, we did this for the community meeting. We actually had our communications department put out the word through their various social media accounts. We should probably, I think that's something I should do tomorrow is contact the communications department to once again try to get the word out through the entire city, through those social media channels.
I can interject. I'm sorry, write an Inglewood Herald article and things like that. I mean, there's lots of ways to do that. Like you said, Facebook, all that sort of stuff, that'd be great.
Just to follow up on what Sorry, this is Nancy, but just to follow up on what John was saying, it is on the, in the news section on the front page of the city's website that the public hearing will be held on the 22nd.
Next door would be a good one, too. I don't know that many people that look at the Inglewood website. So I'm not sure if that's going to really do a whole lot.
I saw somebody else had their hand up. Diane, was it you at one point?
I'm not seeing any hands currently, Chair.
Okay.
Okay, let me just continue here.
Oh, sorry, Kate just put her hand up.
Okay.
Continue and I'll ask it later. I just wasn't sure where we were at.
Okay. So going into chapter four, this is built form design. And so we have, in the previous regulating plan, we have done a lot to make it easier for development to occur at greater intensities than we had previously allowed in this area. However, chapter four is a little bit different in the fact that Inglewood has never really put a lot of architectural design standards or guidelines within zoning districts. However, we felt that we need to do that to ensure that we have a very high level of design in and redevelopment of this area. And so in this portion of the document, I borrowed very heavily, not from the Westminster specific plan, but rather from a few stationary plans that have been created to regulate Denver TOD stations, including the Broadway Station area and the Central Park Station area in the Stapleton area. And so I borrowed very heavily from those documents to create comparable architectural standards. So we have building and building masking and scale, activated building edges. I'm not going to go through all this, building materials. We have standards for building fenestration, building composition, building scaling elements, primary pedestrian entrances, tenant pedestrian entrances, vehicle entrances, accessibility and universal design, building porches, patios and stoops, canopies, shading devices and trellises, balconies and railings, solar wind power equipment, satellite dishes and antennas, service area, trash loading and recycling, utility spaces and mechanical equipment, parking structures, et cetera. And so we feel that we have a lot of control this way in terms of what the design looks like and that we hope, we're hoping that the city's council will draw a little bit of comfort from that, that there's a lot of standards that will be enforced in terms of the quality of redevelopment. Does anybody have any questions on, on the architectural standards?
I don't see any hands.
All right, and then chapter five deals with landscape and open space design. We have general landscape requirements. And then we have a section dedicated to the Festival Street Public Plaza area. And we have then a little bit, something principles and standards for Inglewood Parkway.
And Diane has a question now, and then Kate.
All right.
Hi, sorry, this was actually about the architectural standards. I, maybe I missed it, but I, I was curious, is there any discussion of or possibility of including maybe a design review board? Who would kind of think holistically about, about some of these architectural elements? And the reason I suggest it is because, you know, sometimes in order to like adhere to the letter of the code, something might not look as good as it could, or, you know, they're just trying to meet that minimum. But the design review board, who would be comprised of presumably designers, architects, folks in that type of industry, could, you know, sort of weigh the benefits of this versus that and, you know, sort of grant an exemption if necessary or desired. Anyway, just curious if that's been discussed.
That's a very good point. And that is something that I did come across. In Arvada, they do have such a review committee like that. And for particularly, I believe it's the old town area. And I thought that could be a nice addition to our reviewing these things, developments for these types of things. However, I believe it may have sort of, and I've, it may have gotten lost amongst staff a little bit. And so I think what I should do is maybe bring that possibly back up to my superiors to see if they, how they would feel about that.
Thank you.
Kate?
I was just wondering what the, the public plaza. Is that something then, so it's publicly accessible, but would it be considered like a city park? Or is this something within like the development agreement or something like that? A developer would maintain that, build and maintain it? Or is it like, I was just trying to figure out, how does that actually get built? And then who, who would maintain it based on this plan?
So the Festival Street, of course, is, is, would be located where the, where the station stairway is towards Inca. It's that area where today we have the fountain and the green ovals. And that's the site of the concert series and things like that. And so in our conversation with SKB, they, they have the main interest in doing that fest, redoing that Festival Street. Because they, in the land swap, they're going to be getting that retail that's along that plaza area. And it's, it's in their, strongly in their interest to create a very special Festival Street that has a lot, that is much better program than it is today. You know, so the city, of course, we have our concert series and that's about the extent of it. And I think they want something that's like, there's got, they want to have something there that's going to be something happening every week and to draw people there. So, so it's really probably going to be on SKB because they will be owning that, the commercial, existing commerce space to the north. And then they'll be building adjacent to it to the south. And so, yes, I, I believe that it's going to be on SKB's dime. However, they may be able to get a lot of help in terms from the DDA in terms of TIF and be able to finance some of that. And maybe Dan can talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I would just mention, and it's a good backdrop to a number of these questions, that there's a vision that a lot of this stuff would be controlled by contract. Not only in terms of our agreements with L and R with SKB, but with the rights that we, the city have then to step into contracts with the buyers, that they bring in the developers for specific projects. And so that's probably why this idea of the, of the administrative process maybe isn't as fully developed as you would see in other situations is because the idea is that a lot of this would really be negotiated and defined in at least two levels of contract. With, with detailed, you know, design information, specifications, requirement, performance requirements on programming and all that kind of stuff that typically isn't, you know, in a zoning code per se.
There are no other questions, John, you can go forward.
Okay. The open landscape and open space plan has a section here on landscape plant materials. It also has a section on hardscape component standards, site furnishing standards, lighting, screening, fencing, walls and railings. And then finally come to chapter six, which is the Inglewood Station Transfer Specific Plan Implementation. Once again, we have this specific plan implementation intent, which mirrors very highly the language that you saw in the specific, the specific plan intent statement, opening the TSA overlay in the Black Line UDC amendments. Also specifies relationships to other plans, relationship with the Inglewood Municipal Code and the development review process. And also speaks to the potential of variances and impact fees and recovery costs. And that closes the specific plan regulating document. And I'm, I'm ready, we're ready to have any further discussions or questions on the specific plan regulating document.
Diane?
Hi, I'm sure you're expecting some landscape questions from me. As far as the individual words of various elements of the landscape document, is this? Do you want me to go line by line, or should I?
Sure.
Maybe, yeah. Under the design standards, number six says areas within the public right of way shall be subject to the public works review and approval. I assume that that also means it will require planning approval or some individual who is knowledgeable in or parks and rec or something, someone who's knowledgeable in plant. Sorry, I'm getting some feedback over here. Who's knowledgeable in plant material and irrigation.
Okay, which, can you specify which number that is again, under which section?
Oh, sure, it's on page forty-one, under five point two general landscape requirements, design standards. Number six, areas within the public right of way shall be subject to public works review and approval. And, and that makes sense to me in the sense that obviously it would need to conform to the utility requirements and, and any pavement, streetscape requirements, but public works, correct me if I'm wrong, public works typically does not have someone on staff who, who is knowledgeable in like landscape specific elements.
No, that's very true. I think it's their, what they're going to be looking at is, does this landscaping, is it obstructing site triangles? Most likely, that's probably what, or is there something that they find that might be somewhat dangerous? Potentially maybe growing too close or eventually growing too large, maybe to encroach on the right of way. That's why I'm kind of guessing that's what their purview will be. I don't think they'll be saying, well, you, you gotta, you can't plant this certain species and you've got to plant evergreens or something like that. I don't think it's going to be like that. I think it's, they're, they're going to be looking specifically at, is it, is the, is the, the tree that you're looking to plant, is it far enough, pulled far enough back from the intersection that it doesn't interfere with the site distances?
That makes complete sense. I guess the, the only reason I brought it up is because since number six specifically calls out is because since number six specifically calls out public works is your approval. I'm just curious, do we also need to say what other department is, what other department's approval is required for that component as well?
Okay. I will have to ask Wade about that and see what he thinks about that.
And then Kate?
Oh wait, can I go? Can I add my other questions?
I'm sorry Diane, I didn't realize you weren't done. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. Um, under number five point five, landscape plant materials on page forty-five. I very much appreciate the principle, number one, respect to the native Colorado environment and low use requirements in the landscape with a preference for native grasses. I would, I would be in favor of saying native forbs and grasses and or possibly making note of um, the seasonal quality of the plant material so that it doesn't look completely dead in the winter. And then the, and then my last comment would be um, design standard number six, also on page forty-five, all areas utilizing turf shall be sotted, not seeded. Generally, I would agree with that, especially for public spaces. However, there are some um, sort of up and coming cultivars of highly drought tolerant lawn grass, which would be a buffalo grass that, that are in plug form and not available in sod yet. And I wouldn't want to preclude that by saying sotted. Um, food for thought or grass for thought.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think that concludes my line by line comments.
Thank you. We will consider that.
Um, I had a question kind of connected to the landscape requirement principles and then also permitted uses. And with one of the first principles, you know, being about creating spaces that encourage recreation and social interaction. And um, but community gardens are not allowed right now in MUB one. And would that be something, although it may not pencil out super well, but could it be something that could be either, you know, a use or at least a use with on a site? Because growing food can definitely be a way to foster more social interaction, especially in that core area of, of the city. Um, so I guess one thought would be, could we add community garden to the allowable uses? So that way, if a developer, whoever's building the site, would have the option to having that be a landscape component?
All right. So you, so add that to the MUB one uh, table of allowed uses, community garden.
That would be my suggestion. I don't see what the risk would be of having that as an allowable use. And like thinking of a place like the Feederi, um, not quite a community garden, but such a great innovative business, um, that wasn't an allowed use. We had to do a conditional use. So it's some of those things that, you know, it would be great to have those be allowable by right um, within, within the site.
Okay. And is there any uh, uh, things, anything that we need to change within the principles or standards here? Or is that, would that just be enough if we just add that to the land use table?
Just to the land use table?
Okay.
I'd like to support what Diane was saying about the um, plant materials. And I'll go back to one of my favorite places called the Chick-fil-A on Broadway in Dartmouth, where the things that were planted there are not doing well and some are obviously dead. So I do think that some sort of review board or something like that might be helpful. Um, since um, public works may not have that depth of knowledge for things that would be, you know, are better at to surviving. Because some of the areas we're talking about, um, you know, the hell strip survivability is, is, can be very harsh on many, many plants. So I just want to support what Diane was saying about uh, materials.
Thank you. Um, yes, maybe that could be, maybe something similar to the design review board could be established for reviewing landscape.
Well, and it doesn't hurt to involve the community who have, have expertise in those areas. Um, you know, you folks down at, it's, you know, city building can't know everything, so, or undo everything. So, um, you know, just something to think about.
Yes, thank you.
Any more comments?
Uh, am I, comment on the uh, the, is there a uh, percentage of ground coverage that, lot coverage that needs to be green for apartment buildings or whatever? Any, any development that's done, is there? Cause I, I, it'd be nice to have a pretty good percentage, you know, ten to twenty, twenty-five percent of the developing the area as uh, some kind of a, like trees or grass or, you know, some kind of garden of some type or another. I haven't seen anything like that. Is there, is there anything like that in there?
I think that's an area where, where we uh, decided to um, rely on the MUB one base zone district for. Uh, as I, I believe that the MUB one zone district uh, requires, I believe it's ten percent landscaping area. And so we thought that we would probably just stick with that. Um, some of, there's other areas that we are kind of doing the same thing, like the signage code. We decided that we, why should we reinvent our signage code? That our sign code should probably apply here as well. And so we're gonna rely on the, the base zone district for the signage as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with one, one quick, one, one quick note, there, there is sod available in fescue. They, they have long fescue grasses, takes almost no water. And it's basically comparable to Kentucky bluegrass. Very close.
Kate? Thanks. I, I was just wondering within here, within like the landscape requirements. Um, I haven't seen it. What are the drainage requirements? I guess one of the things that I would like to avoid are a bunch of individual fenced off, really deep stormwater detention ponds, rather than is it possible to have more like of a a regional or a district approach or something like that? Because site by site, some of those can be um, pretty unsightly. So I was just trying to think of how, how would each site address something like that in terms of drainage?
Uh, it's a pretty good question. Um, so as I understand it, uh, not too long ago, uh, the public works kind of changed their policies on that. And I'm not all that familiar with it, but they, but they've uh, started. Uh, they increased requirements on large developments to uh, handle drainage in different ways. And I think that typically they're doing it typically underground. Um, but that's a good point. Um, I'm not quite sure. We might need to be talking to our utilities and public works departments about how they would, you know, if we are successful in getting SKB and L and R to redevelop these areas. Are they, what are they going to require? And I'm not quite sure what that will be.
Nancy, do you see any other hands? Oh, there we go. Diane, she just popped up.
Oh, I, I think I meant to lower it, but I would completely echo Kate's uh, comment regarding drainage. I think um, large and unsightly detention basins or detention ponds and even just you know, catch basins that are extraordinarily depressed. I would say something like at Charles Hay World School where my kids go. The catch basins are kind of, in my opinion, extremely depressed. Presumably to be very conservative about, you know, how water is flowing, but it really makes for far less usable space because you have these essentially gullies in the middle of the lawn. Um, so it's some way that we can encourage usually using BMPs, rain gardens, sort of like the range of tools that we can use to more naturally clean and move and store water um, would be awesome.
Yes, and I, I believe because of what we're trying to achieve at the site, it, it's, uh, we're trying to develop, develop a more intensive site. And, you know, uh, going with uh, you know, open detention areas is antithetical to that, uh, antithetical to that. It's, it's not going to uh, get us there if we, if we're doing it that way. So we need to be uh, yes, looking at drainage uh, methods and uh, structures that are not intrusive and do not take up lots of space.
I think I see Carl's hand up.
Is there any talk about uh, pulling Little Dry Creek out of the ground and create a green belt to go, would go from, probably from Logan to something uh, with the uh, creek in the middle of the greenbelt? Is there any talk about that?
Uh, Dan, do you have some information on that?
Yeah, it's kind of, that idea has come up uh, on occasion throughout the planning process. And actually, there have been some specific costing exercises on it. And as you can imagine, it's just, the cost is really excessive. And uh, the way that it flows, it flows diagonally across most of the parcels that it crosses. So that creates a lot of other problems. So I think generally there's been a thought to try to just um, you know, handle or, or produce the green areas uh, without, without daylighting uh, Dry Creek. And also there's a thought that emerged with uh, some of the additional funding that's, that's resulted from COVID recoveries, uh, recovery uh, legislation to redo the plaza areas um, that exist already uh, on Little Dry Creek up around Broadway and really try to make that a much nicer, more usable space. And I, I think that's, I think between the two, we'll get a lot of benefit uh, without the extreme cost of trying to daylight Dry Creek.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Diane?
Sorry, I had another one pop up. Um, on five point seven, the site furnishings. On design guidelines, number two, trash receptacles that allow for separate recycling containers should be used to promote sustainability. I completely agree with this. However, I would just bring up um, more than one of my clients before has said, recycling doesn't pencil. So they just throw the recycling in the trash anyway. And I know there have been a number of documentaries about how, say, number five plastics don't actually get recycled. They get shipped off somewhere. I, I guess all of this is just to say, how do we make sure that when we recycle something that it gets recycled? Is there any process in the city that would help? You know, developers be able to make it pencil or do you have any thoughts on that? I feel I don't know everything about why the developer would have told me, but I have had more than one client tell me that.
Well, the, one thing I can say to that is that I recently found out uh, this week that uh, that the city manager's office is looking to um, hires a sustainability coordinator within their office. And that uh, I believe that uh, keeping wood beautiful would then transfer from community development to the city manager's office under this new sustainability coordinator. Uh, so that, uh, with the hiring of someone like that who would be an expert in sustainability practices, that might be able to um, help us out there. Um, but at this point, you know, I'm, I'm no expert either. And I, and I've heard that too, that plastics uh, might, you know, they vote, they don't go where we think they, they do and they're not, they're being, you know, maybe they're going to a foreign country or something like that.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that sort of conceptually, I totally agree with it. And I'm just trying to think of what can we as a city do to help ensure that it, that it's working the way we want it to. So I think when the sustainable, if, if the sustainability expert is hired, will we get to meet them as a commission?
Um, I don't see why not. I, I think that'd be probably a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just echo that, John, that the sustainability value is just increased so much um, from city council. And I think you're gonna see that flow through a lot of, a lot of um, different initiatives. And uh, the redevelopment of city center will definitely be one of those.
Yeah, there, there's quite a bit of sustainability in the new uh, city's strategic plan as well. Um, which uh, was developed by uh, the city administration and Sean Lewis. So um, yeah, I think that we are moving that in that direction as a city.
Well, and sustainability can come from the demolition too. You can ask for many materials to be recycled in demolition, but that's another issue. Any other questions? All right, um, seeing none, I'm on to staff's choice.
Let me, let me make one comment there is, is there any apartments in Inglewood that does recycling?
Goodie. Uh, are you ready for me, Chair Austin?
Of course. Hello, Wade, welcome.
Okay, I, I thought I heard other speakers. I wasn't sure.
Unfortunately, Wade, Kate has her hand up, sorry.
Sorry, Wade.
Oh, okay.
We do have some, another question first.
Right, um, I was just wondering, and maybe this will come up in staff's choice. But so our next meeting is the public hearing on all of this. Correct? And I'm just wondering, um, Michelle or John or folks, like if there's anything, like some guidance right now for how we should either bring forward additional questions or how you see kind of us working through all of this in one hearing? And then the, also I just wanted to ask you then for this area plan, we would vote to approve it, not necessarily do any kind of, or, you know, that would be a motion. But we're not looking to wordsmith or anything, this particular plan at that public hearing, that this is a fluid document that could change over time. That's what, there's the, the, the three different things that we would be looking at at the public hearing. The, the MUB one changes and then this plan like adopting this plan, I'm trying to make sure I have that right going into that next meeting.
There will be two public hearings that night. The first parent hearing will be on the UDC text amendments plus this Inglewood TSA specific plan document. And then I'll be followed up with a, the second hearing, which it will be actually uh, the formal application to rezone the city center PUD to MUB one and the adoption of the TSA overlay district. So there's the plan, that's the document that you saw here. But then there's a district that becomes part of the official zoning map. Uh, and so we have to, once we have developed, adopted the plan and then used UDC text amendments, then we can formally adopted the plan and that you see text amendments, then we can formally approve the official map amendments that uh changes the P U D to M U B one and creates the area for the TSA overlay district.
And so like for, you had mentioned before, there may be changes to things like the connectivity section or the bike ped section based on like other plans or things that could be coming up. Those would be administrative changes to this plan. They wouldn't necessarily come back to us for any kind of like change. I think it goes back to that process question that, that Judy had. I'm just trying to figure out what, how much of this is like exact wording that we would be approving?
Uh, so as I said, uh, that these future plan processes uh will have involvement. They will have stay sessions, but they won't have formal hearings or approvals unless they meet the criteria of a major amendment.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? All right, I'm on to you, Wade, with um staff's choice.
Hey, thank you very much. I wanted to update you uh on the U D C update uh process. You all interviewed um two consultants a few weeks ago. I apologize, I could not be there that evening, but uh, we are moving forward with Gould Evans. And the contract has actually just been sent out today. So we are moving forward with getting them under contract. That will have to go before city council uh for approval and hopefully all goes well. We can get that wrapped up in June yet uh here in a couple of weeks with city council. Um, but it was a unanimous choice, um essentially to, to proceed with Gould Evans and um that's what we are, are working towards. Secondly, um, city council did hold its first uh in-person meeting last evening. It was a hybrid meeting, meaning some people were in person. There were also still some people uh virtual uh through, through Zoom. Um, they are meeting in the community room. And they have the room set up very specifically for city council meetings. There are different, there are partitions for each council member and then uh for public and so forth. It is, the community room is not going to be available for any other board and commission, however. That is also true for the city council chambers. Those two rooms will not be available to anybody except council uh until at least October. So um given that uh scenario, um, I wanted to get your all's preference. Planning and zoning commission does have the option. We are free to meet in person again. However, it would be in the city council uh meeting room. And there would be no kind of separation. There would be no kind of partitions or anything like that. If we did uh decide to uh meet in person again. Uh, the other option is we can continue to uh do what we're doing here tonight and just stay virtual until council chambers and or the community room becomes available to all boards and commissions. Um, so all boards and commissions are in this same scenario. But we, we have the option. So I wanted to get your preference as to do you wish to meet in person in the conference room on the third floor of the civic center where we'd all be very snuggled together uh for meetings? Or do we want to continue to uh use this format and, and continue until those larger rooms become available? Do not need any decisions tonight. Just wanted to get your thoughts, your preferences as to how you'd like to move forward for at least until October. Um, if not a little longer, they are, they are retrofitting those rooms with new sound systems and new um, you know, precautions for COVID. So there will be some, some protections like that installed as well. There will be some plexiglass and that sort of thing in addition to the new audio sound systems. So uh, that's why it's not going to be available until October. And things are set up now very specifically for city council and the decision was that you know, other boards and commissions couldn't use that room, so.
So Wade, that begs the
Questions?
Yeah, what that begs the question, what uh is the format for the meeting on the public hearing on the twenty-second?
The, the format right now is that it will be a Zoom meeting. And we would uh proceed as we have been um virtually. Nancy would bring in um speakers, wear them in. And they'd, they'd offer their comments um virtually.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on that for Wade? You can just, you don't have to raise your hand. You can just talk. That's fine.
I vote for in person. I just feel like we haven't been able to meet the new people. There is value in us meeting in person. That's just a personal preference of mine. Um, I don't feel like we've had a real opportunity to just, well, we have no opportunity to meet the new people. But anyways, that's just a
Any other comments? Okay. Uh, uh, next staff member would be John, Dan, Nancy?
I have nothing for the chat tonight.
Same here, nothing, nothing more.
Nancy?
Um, I'd just let you know that uh beginning the first part of Ju- July, excuse me, Meg will be moving into uh a regular member position. She's been the alternate but acting as a uh a regular member since we had a vacancy. And then Brenda Hupka was appointed as your alternate.
Okay, that's nice to know. All right, do, then we're on to you now.
Well, I have uh nothing else to add to this meeting today.
Commissioner's Choice, I, how about Kate Townley?
I think I've said enough tonight. Thank you.
Judy?
No, I don't have anything. Thanks.
Carl?
Uh, how will the, uh, I guess this is for Nancy. How will the uh people that come to talk to the hearing be notified and whatnot? Do they have to put in a notice like a few days ahead or?
It's on the agenda, huh? How they can wow, hold on, I gotta mute some people. Hold on. Getting way too much feedback. Thank you. Um, so it's on the agenda every night or every meeting if you wish to speak on how they can do that. So they just click the link and then they come in as a different uh rather than a panelist, they come in as an attendee. So then we just go through and ask them if they wish to speak or if they're there just to listen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Diane?
Nothing bad tonight. Thank you.
Noel?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Kate Fuller?
Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Diane's comments about recycling. Um, because I've heard a lot about that too lately and I would love for our recycling to be um as legitimate as possible. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. Um, and thanks to staff for preparing your presentation for city council and for everything tonight. That was a bear. Um, so thank you so much for your dedication.
All right, Meg?
I turned off my video, sorry. Uh, nothing further from me. Thanks.
All right. All right. I, yes, I would like to thank uh staff to um a lot of information for all of us to digest and it'll be interesting to see the public reaction to it. So seeing no further comments, uh, I will uh say that this meeting is adjourned and thank you all so much for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.